Everybody, if we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us up to our approval of the minutes of our previous meeting of July 14th, 2021. May I have a motion for the following? Okay, motion Dr. Siddiqui, seconded by Mrs. Mammalito. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
That's four zero. Do you not want to? July 14th. You're allowed to still vote for it, don't even go in here. Okay, so what the records show, it's five zero. All right, that brings us right up to Dr. Bossard's superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Tomio. And just to clarify, and I apologize to my security team that we didn't give clear guidance prior to the meeting and the public attending. The current guidance for masks from New York State for this type of meeting is that masks are required for unvaccinated individuals using an honor system basis for you to self-identify. So for those residents who are present, who elected to wear their masks, we appreciate that. For those residents that have elected to attend tonight who wish not to, if you are a vaccinated individual, that is at your discretion. I apologize that security did not get that clear direction prior to the meeting. And that is one of the points of conversation tonight in the superintendent's report. This summer has been a productive one. We've done a great deal of work identifying new staff members to join our team, making new curriculum initiatives and plans for September, identifying an outstanding new administrator that we hope the board supports later in the agenda. But we've also been playing a bit of a waiting game, looking for guidance from the New York State Department of Health or other agencies to indicate what our requirements will be when our students return in September to maintain the safety, health, and welfare during the ongoing COVID-19 crisis. And I put together a presentation tonight for the board and community to kind of take us through and guide that conversation. But I want to make sure the public understands that following the presentation, there will not only be an opportunity for public input tonight, and I know that many of you would like to express your thoughts, and we appreciate those we've received prior to the meeting, but we're also going to be opening up a portal on the district website, creating a unique email address for residents and stakeholders. Submit their feedback regarding tonight's proposal for the next two weeks. And there's no action item on the board agenda tonight. There is no vote forthcoming on our reopening plan, and there is no consensus of the board that we seek to reach tonight. We want to make sure that everyone on the board and the community has ample opportunity to digest the plan, to do their own research, to make their own judgments, and to provide the feedback that they feel is essential for the administration and the board to understand. And then at the September 2nd meeting, which is a week before our students return to school, we will provide very specific guidance about the reopening of our buildings. Between this time and that time, other governmental agencies may weigh in and impact that decision. And if you're asking my opinion, I do believe that will occur. But let's talk about the entirety of that proposal in the form of a PowerPoint that Martha got up while I was speaking. Martha, to which way do I direct? Yeah. Okay. So we do wish to welcome back, and we will anxiously await our students arriving on September 9th. It's a bit of an extraordinary school year in that we don't begin with our students until after Labor Day and after the Jewish holiday of Rosh Hashanah. That lands just after Labor Day this year. So we have an extraordinary late start date, which in many respects is a welcomed portion of our calendar. And I would hope that the largest percentage of our students and parents will realize a greater sense of normalcy and a return to normalcy within our program. There is so many aspects of our day that we had to amend a bit last year, which we can return to more general best practices this year. And the most essential is that all of our buildings will be opening to full-time, in-person instruction from the first day of the school year. And for those of you that can remember back to September of 2020 with hybrid approaches and A and B cohorts and Wednesdays and all of those things that we had to do to accommodate COVID-19, that's all in the past, and we're looking to move forward. We anticipate that transportation will be used as normal. Our clubs, athletics will all resume for students. As a matter of fact, through Section 11, unless there are any amendments to the schedule, inter-scholastic athletics begins next week. Our marching band was on the field just prior to this meeting, practicing earlier today. So we are seeing a greater sense of typical activities within our community. And we're also very much looking forward to the last thing we presented at this meeting, which is the benefit of those grant-funded programs. For the first time in a long time, we have the financial resources to introduce some new initiatives and some new programs to truly benefit our students. Dr. Hull and her team did an excellent job presenting at a prior board meeting just how those programs will work to benefit our students, address some of that regression we noted during the pandemic, and really benefit all of our learners, whether it's remediation or enrichment. And we look forward to giving the board an update and with the community on the progress of those programs as our year progresses. So the guidance timeline looks like this. There were several weeks of silence, and then we started to receive rapid fire. And I don't need to read the slide to you, and I think a good portion of our community and our board is aware of the documents most recently received, being in the form of the CDC guidance, the guidance from the Suffolk County Department of Health, and that of NYSCD, the New York State Education Department, which arrived just about a week ago on the 12th of August. Interestingly is that point that I made about the statement on August 15th where our current lieutenant governor, future governor, made a statement about how she is in favor of universal masking for all public schools. Now, we have to try to learn from what's happening around us. And I think the board is aware that throughout the pandemic, the tri-state area has been working pretty closely in concert as to the requirements to remediate COVID. So New York, New Jersey, Connecticut has really been banded together when putting forward what COVID recommendations are. New York right now is the only one missing from having given a directive to public schools requiring 100% mask, a universal masking mandate. Right now, there are 14 states that have required universal masking. Connecticut, New Jersey, Vermont, Massachusetts are among them. I think that it is likely New York will be placed on that list following the swearing-in of our next governor. But that is opinion. That is also wait and see. So when we look at where these recommendations are coming from, and I believe that the priority has to remain clear. Education is our business, but health and safety has to be paramount to everything that we do. So it is the mission and vision of the board and the administration to make sure we are making every action to keep all of our students, faculty, and staff as safe as possible. And when we look to the guidance that we have received, it is from the CDC. It is from the Suffolk County Department of Health, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and New York State Department of Education. And what's fortunate is that we really didn't have to sort through these documents too carefully because they were all uniform in nature. Each of those agencies gave us universal guidance that they felt would help to mediate safety in our district. So this is the proposal of safety guidelines that I am making, and the word proposal is there for a reason because again, we're seeking feedback from the board and the community. But this is in concert with all of those guidance documents. If you're familiar with the CDC guidance, if you're familiar with the guidance document offered by the Suffolk County Department of Health, if you've read the manual that is now posted on our website from the New York State Education Department, you will see that there is nothing that deviates from that on this slide. So to go through it quickly, and I'm certain these are the points that the community is most interested in. It does, the plan does call for 100% masking inside. And those mask breaks and the strategic use of outdoor space and all of the precautions that we took last year to help our students to navigate the mask-wearing will of course remain in place and can be enhanced. It calls for no masks outside. It calls for all the barriers to be removed. In fact, all the barriers have been removed. All of our Plexiglas, it's not Plexiglas. The composite material that we purchased last year to create the barriers around desks have all been folded and stored nicely. They have not been disposed of. I have learned through this process that the guidance changes rapidly. And while the barriers were initially recommended, they are no longer recommended. We have stored them in case they are recommended again in the future, but they are no longer present in the classrooms. There is no longer a recommendation to do daily temperature checks, so that will save us time and inconveniencing our students in the mornings. There is no longer requirement nor recommendation for weekly or daily assurances. The Sunday email that you all received as parents and the daily email that our staff received will no longer be required. An important point and one that we'll focus on in a future slide is if there is 100% universal appropriate mask-wearing, there'll be no need for contact tracing or quarantining. And I can't stress the importance of this bullet enough. So that if a student, a singular student, tests positive for COVID-19, that child will need to quarantine. There would be no need to quarantine or have any further action for any other child or adult present in the room. And we'll have a diagram to that effect later. Three feet of distancing is now the recommendation, which allows us to bring back 100% of our students and have our class sizes in a typical fashion without removing students for remote instruction, without going to a hybrid approach. And that three feet of distancing allows us to make some creative decisions about the way tables and desks are arranged in our school buildings. Mrs. Milan, our Harley principal, spent some time this summer arranging desks in quadrants to see if the students would remain three feet apart even when working in a group, and they in fact would. So the days of requiring rows and students spaced systematically is no longer necessary with the three feet of distance. Six feet still remains the recommendation for students when they are eating. That is because obviously they'll be removing their masks to do so. So we will have to continue to make accommodations in our cafeterias and other eating spaces. And obviously, no sharing of food or drinks is allowed. Washing hands, frequently practicing appropriate hygiene, important all the time, particularly appropriate right now. Any student with an adult or fever cough, rups, and stuffing must stay home. This is not new guidance. This is what we've always asked you to respect and follow. If children or adults are sick, please do not attend school. And then the caveat that we had to stress so frequently last year, that if any household member is pending a COVID exam, that all members of that household remain at home until we have that result. The reason for that is simple. If it turns out to be a positive, we would prefer to be cautious and keep the family segregated until which time we know it's negative. This speaks to what the quarantine guidance is. And we now know that last year, contact tracing was an overwhelming portion of our new responsibilities. For each positive case, there was hours invested by the school team, response team, and largely the administration in identifying students that would be close contacts, notifying the parents of those individuals, directing quarantining, communicating with the Suffolk County Department of Health. We are still required to report every positive COVID case to the Suffolk County Department of Health, but if universal masking is in place, there will be no close contacts to report. Without masks, we have to use the diagram on the left in that anyone who's in that three feet of space around the student who tests positive or adult who tests positive would be directed to quarantine for that 10-day period. With masks, you'll see the only child who would be restricted from attending school and subject to quarantine would be the individual who tests positive. We had thousands of instructional days lost this year due to quarantine. Some students were quarantined four and five times during the year and were required to work remotely during that period. That's 50 days spent outside of the classroom, learning remotely, which while we appreciated having because it made instruction possible, it does not replicate the experience of attending school with your classmates and your teacher. We have prioritized, we will continue to prioritize the importance of in-person learning. So we're trying to minimize any need to shift to remote instruction. But that is the guidance that would change regarding quarantine restrictions. As far as vaccinations, the slide speaks to where we are as a school district. The school district does not intend to require a vaccine as a local agency on behalf of the students or the faculty. I don't think there is any desire by the board of the administration to take a firm position on vaccines. We do not consider ourselves a governmental agency with the authority to do that. So we will say that the CDC continues to recommend CDC for all that vaccinations, for all those that are eligible. It remains at the discretions of the adults who are eligible for the vaccine or the adults charged with the child's care. Unvaccinated individuals, however, are required to adhere to all state and federal requirements. Remote instruction. As I mentioned, we are prioritizing live, in-person instruction. We feel students learn best when they are present in the classroom amongst their classmates and in front of their teachers and having as typical a day as possible. So the hybrid model is not part of the options this year in the Elwood School District. The fully remote model remains an option only for students where it is medically necessary, when a student cannot safely attend school without risk of contracting COVID-19. So if there is a child who is eligible or the parents are interested in them having a fully remote program, we are seeking to partner with BOCES, WS BOCES, Western Suffolk BOCES. Dr. Hull and some of her colleagues throughout the region in the curriculum offices are working with the district superintendent for Western Suffolk BOCES in the final stages of developing a fully remote program, where teachers from several districts in the region would provide the instruction to our students K to 12, who it is medically necessary for them to attend remotely, compromised immune systems, organ donor recipients. There is a very small number of children we believe that would qualify as medically exempt, who cannot attend school with a doctor's order, and we want to make sure there is a remote option available for them. The other group, small group, would be the students subject to quarantine. If we did have a situation where a child tests positive for COVID or is quarantined due to COVID, we would continue to follow similar practices where we did last year, where the student would work remotely in their own classroom through the use of Google Meets, Google Classroom, with their regular teacher during the school day. We're looking carefully at the primary grades. We're not sure that's the best model. A child in kindergarten, first, second grade, sitting in front of a laptop for six hours a day was not ideal, particularly if the child is working singularly rather than as part of the class, working remotely. So we're looking to modify that a bit at the primary level. But certainly at the upper intermediate and the secondary level, students who are subject to quarantine would still be able to rotate into their classrooms in a fashion similar to last year for that definitive period of time. But if there are parents watching, listening, looking at the plan later, if there is a child that lives in your household that is medically unable to attend school, please contact your child's building principal at your earliest possible convenience so we can begin the discussion of what application for the remote program might look like in partnership with our BOCES colleagues. Daily school attendance, again, is a priority. All students are expected to attend school in person every day. I heard many concerns from parents and faculty members last year about the ease in which students shifted from remote to in-person instruction and how perhaps some students who belonged in the classroom last year opted to work remotely when it wasn't essential. That won't be an option this year. We plan to, again, prioritize in-person learning and implement our attendance policy to the greatest capacity possible, making allowances for COVID-19. Once again, there will be no hybrid model available, and students who are absent will complete work in the manner in which they did pre-pandemic. If a child wakes up sick one day, there's no remote option into the classroom. They'll make up the assignments and the work in the manner in which they did pre-COVID-19. Additional accommodations, however, will be made when COVID-19 extends that absence or a student is under quarantine. So there are two basic alternatives to a child attending school. For a student, for a parent who may not be comfortable sending their child or who is not comfortable with their reopening plan. Homeschooling is a real thing. There are parents who have opted during this time to take on the instructional obligations of providing curriculum to their children, and that is something that parents have the right to do. Mrs. Rouse, who is the assistant who works with Dr. Hull in the curriculum office, has all the information necessary should any parent seek to learn more about homeschooling. Then the other is what I described, the regional remote option through Western Suffolk BOCES or another BOCES affiliate, where we enable students to log in from home remotely assigned to teachers who are working exclusively remotely in the various curriculum areas. The one thing, and it is underlined for a reason, is that BOCES is looking for a full-year commitment to the program. They don't want it to be a fluid attendance basis. They want children to commit to being part of that program so it doesn't disrupt the process for the students who partake in it. That is a tuition-based program. That is an expense that was not part of our regular budget. The high mark for what that will cost is approximately $6,000 per child. That is $6,000 we do not budget. So Dr. Hull, Ms. Dunkland, and I got together, found flexibility within the federal grant by removing some other things that we had identified, and we will allow for opportunities for tuition-based attendance in the BOCES remote program if it is medically necessary to support our students. Transportation. Parents, thank you, who helped provide transportation to and from our school buildings last year. We truly appreciate the partnership. With the restrictions we began the year with on our buses, we could not have opened our buildings without your assistance, and we are in your debt for all those mornings and afternoons where you made sure you were available to drop off and pick up your children. Now we'd like you to put them back on the bus. Transportation, we know we can do at greater capacity. The capacity that we are permitted to load our buses at is well within the state guidelines to transport all Elwood students to and from school on a school bus. The requirement to use transportation is universal masking. There is no wiggle room with that. That is the state guideline for riding on a bus. And as long as we have that masking in place, we'll be able to have a typical arrival and departure system. The reason why we are very much prioritizing that is for those of you that had experiences with our drop-off and pickup, you know it was time-consuming. You know we needed to truncate the day a bit in order to accommodate those extended drop-off and pickup procedures. We're looking to maximize instructional time as much as we possibly can. Every minute is valuable. Every moment we get to spend with your children, we want to prioritize on instruction. So when the students arrive in waves on our buses and depart in waves on our buses, and we know that some parents will continue to support that. But if the greatest percentage of our students ride the buses, we will be able to go back to our typical instructional day schedules. So we're hoping to do that. We will keep all information updated on the website. On the website, there is a tab at the top dedicated to COVID-19. It's available on the homepage of our website, COVID-19 tab. Every document we receive, every message I send, every presentation I make, including this one, will be archived on that portion of our website so that you, as a community, as a board, have all the information that we have as an administration. There are no secrets. There are no hidden plans. We are putting everything out there so the community, we can attempt to have the community have a full understanding of what we're trying to accomplish and why we're trying to accomplish it. And it will include an opportunity for feedback. That is a new email address. This presentation will be placed on the website along with a direct link to this email. We would like this email, Reopening21@Elwood, to be used to provide the feedback. We have heard from a number of parents with thoughts and perspectives of reopening, but that number is less than 20. We have over 2,000 students in our district, and we're interested in hearing the thoughts and perspectives of as many parents as possible. So this presentation will be posted tomorrow along with a link to this email, and we hope to hear feedback, thoughts, and opinion from our community before the board meets again on September 2nd. At this time, and for the public present, if it's okay, Mr. Tomio, I will indicate that there is an item on the agenda tonight for public input, and obviously, we're looking to hear some thoughts and perspectives on this material that I just presented, but at this time, questions, comments from the Board of Education would be appreciated.
Just to clarify, you want the public speaking now or residents' remarks? After the board, obviously?
After the board, please.
Okay.
I have a question.
Ms. Weiss?
Dr. Bossard, when you go back to the slide where if we're doing 100% masking, the only person that has to be quarantined is the child that's infected, as opposed to if we don't have 100% masking, then those within a perimeter. I don't know if you want to get back to the.
Mrs. Weiss, I'll be happy to answer that question. Martha, can you put up the slide that has the 10 bullet points of reopening guidance? That's a good one. We'll stay there. To answer Mrs. Weiss's question, for clarification, that's correct. If we have universal masking in place and a child tests positive for COVID-19, only that child will be subject to quarantine. Whereas if the students around the positive child or adult are unmasked, everyone within that radius, that six-foot radius around the child, will be subject to quarantine.
Okay. So last year, when we were all masked and when a child had COVID in the classroom, we quarantined the whole classroom. Am I correct in assuming that the distinction between last year and this year is a lack of knowledge in science? Or what's, why, why only one child now when we're masked, when last year we had the entire class? What's the difference?
Change in recommendation from the CDC and the Suffolk County Department of Health. The district is not in the business of quarantining students. Last year, we acted as an agent of the Suffolk County Department of Health. The Suffolk County Department of Health has given us different guidelines, and this is an illustration of those guidelines.
So the science has changed between last year and the six-feet distance. I was probably going to have to answer this. And did we just not know any better? I mean, you know.
Mrs. Weiss, I can answer that a little bit for you. Essentially, what was found is that masking worked. We found, based on data from previous masking, that there was not a single other child that was positive in that quarantine proceeding. So we didn't know that until we were able to gather the data that we used from last year's quarantine procedures. So the 100% universal masking works in preventing the spread.
The community could just hold until there's community questions, comments. It's just hard to hear you. We couldn't, you know. I want to make sure everyone has the ample opportunity to have their voice heard. Thank you. Ms. Weiss, did that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, it did answer my question. It just, it seems like it was like, I mean, it was unknown last year. It just seems very experimental. It's so, such a huge distinction this year between last year. That's just my, I just wanted that clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
My only comment is that masking allowed us to mitigate the spread of COVID in our classrooms, and we essentially saw no transmission with the exception of, I'm not speaking just to this school district, but island-wide, certain scenarios where masking wasn't able to be used because of sensory issues and so on and so forth.
Mrs. Scroll, not to forget you, sorry.
Do you have anything?
I don't know if there's anything to say, but.
Sorry, I'm not in person today. My in-law surprised us with a vacation, but this is really important, so I decided to pause for my vacation to be here. So thank you all for welcoming me via Zoom. This is a very frustrating issue. Right now, our positivity is 5.61%. We were told if we got vaccinated, we didn't have to. We're vaccinated, some of us, and we still have to wear masks. I know as an educator myself, it is very hard with students wearing masks, but it does make me happy that we can try to get everybody back into the classroom, which I think is step number one. As forever. Like I said, I go back and through this all day, I've listened and emails. I encourage all residents, over the next two weeks, please send us your thoughts and your comments. We work for you. This is not an easy issue. It goes back and forth on a daily basis. It goes back and forth on a daily basis. Two weeks to let us know their thoughts and feelings before we proceed.
Mrs. Skrola, I just want to let you know, we're getting some interruption with your internet service, so your voice is breaking up a bit. I'm not sure if you changed your location since we met in executive session, but if you, if you can attempt to get closer to your router, that might be beneficial.
Yeah, unfortunately, I'm in the woods, so the internet's not great. I apologize. If you can hear me, I just encourage all residents, please send us your comments. And we'll proceed from there. And I thank everybody for emailing us who have already emailed us.
Thank you, Mrs. Skrola. I think what he's.
Saying is comments.
Yes, if you can, just send in your questions, concerns, comments to the email that's provided, and hopefully, he can climb a tree and get better service. Dr. Siddiqui.
Yeah, I just had a statement, if I may.
Yes.
Okay. Dear members of the community, administration, staff, Dr. Bossert, and my fellow board members, I'm speaking as a physician in the community, a parent in the district, and not representing the entirety of the board. The Elwood School District has done a stellar job with regard to the pandemic for the past 18 months. With the attention to detail and input from multiple areas of the community, Elwood School District was able to maintain the safety and the wellness of all children present in our schools. This was done by following protocols and guidelines set forth by the CDC, AAP, New York State Department of Health, Suffolk County Department of Health, and a community task force made up of multiple different representatives of our friends, neighbors, and school district personnel. As the evolution of our knowledge of COVID-19 changed, so did our district. As the case counts and numbers reduced, so did some of the mitigation strategies. Ultimately, we were able to have most students present in the buildings for full-time in-person learning. We have learned that in-person learning is the greatest benefit for all of our students, staff, and teachers. We need everyone inside the school buildings this coming year. Remote learning is not ideal and should be used only if absolutely necessary. We all have seen up close and personal the risk to our students during the periods of isolation and shutdown during the worst days of the pandemic. In order to make full return to school a priority, we must ensure the safety of all present in the school buildings. We must protect our most vulnerable and our children and from COVID-19 and its variants. During May and June of last year, we were able to enjoy a reduction in some of the precautions needed to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. With vaccination rates against COVID-19 on the rise and the cases and hospitalizations reduced, we were able to follow guidelines of reduced mask-wearing while indoors. Unfortunately, with the rise of the Delta variant and other variants on the horizon, increased cases and increased hospitalizations, we must return to stricter regulations and strategies to ensure safety for all. We must protect those that are unable to be vaccinated as of yet and our children under 12. We must protect those that are immunocompromised or under vaccinated. In order to do that, we have to practice a layered mitigation strategy, and this includes the following. If eligible, we should get vaccinated. Speak to your doctor for any issues that you may have. We must have our children practice hand hygiene with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. If that's unavailable, use hand sanitizer with at least 60% alcohol. We must stay home when we're sick and check with your provider if COVID testing is necessary to return to school. Finally, we must all wear our masks when indoors, especially in school, regardless of vaccination status during times and periods of high transmission. All of these strategies have been proven to reduce transmission and will allow us to have all our children return to school in the safest way possible. We are trying to protect everyone in order to have 100% return for 100% of our students for the fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Siddiqui. Did you have any questions or comments for Dr. Bossert's presentation?
No, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Bossert, I do have a few questions and comments. Piggybacking off of Mrs. Weiss's question for the quarantine restrictions, going back to that graph of the students without and with masks. So if a child does not have a mask and they're within the three-feet area, somebody has COVID, that child needs to quarantine, if they have a mask. I think that's, I just want a little clarity, because for me, the way I'm seeing it is if they are wearing a mask, that child has COVID, the child wearing the mask does not have to quarantine. Any child not wearing a mask would have to quarantine.
If I heard you correctly, yes. If the child who tests positive for quarantine was not wearing a mask, even those wearing a mask would still have to quarantine.
So, sorry. It's confusing to me. I just want to make sure.
The reason, my understanding, the reason for universal masking is if you are masked and the person who is positive for COVID are both masked, that is the protection necessary not to subject to quarantine. However, Dr. Siddiqui, please correct me if your understanding is different. If one or other party is unmasked, then both parties would need to quarantine.
But the child with the mask within the three feet wouldn't have to quarantine. I think that's what I'm missing here. I'm sorry, it's a very.
Within three feet, within that close proximity, would need to quarantine.
With a mask on. Give an example. So this graph that we're showing, the black X without mask, the child with the black S, the black mask, has COVID, the Xs around them have to quarantine because they're not wearing masks.
Correct.
The other diagram, the X in the middle with masks, I'm sorry, without masks. So with masks, nobody has to quarantine.
Correct.
Okay, that was my question.
No, I, I'm sorry. The part that I think is confusing is if one or the other party is unmasked, which is why we're recommending universal masking. If there's inconsistency in mask-wearing, it would make everyone subject to quarantine because potentially, the person who is positive with COVID would, could be unmasked and then would subject even masked individuals to quarantine.
So to clarify, maybe I'll make it a little simpler. If the classroom is a mixed bag, masked and unmasked, the child has COVID, anybody masked or unmasked has to quarantine?
Within that six-foot radius, yes.
Within the six-foot radius.
Yes.
Thank you for your clarity.
I'm sorry for the.
That's okay. It's a, there's a lot of scenarios.
It's a new set of guidelines that we have not yet implemented, that we will make sure is clearly understood by all. I will reiterate that with 100% masking, this type of clarity will not be necessary because the only one subject to quarantine would be the positive individual.
Okay, thank you for the clarity. That is my, making sure was my only question.
Could you guys hear me?
Yep.
Hello?
Yeah, we hear you, Tom.
Yes.
Okay, so I guess the one frustration a lot of people have is what's the end game? You know, how long do kids have to wear masks? How do we see this ending? Is it going to be every child can get a vaccination, then we can take the mask off? Does anyone have an idea of how? Have you heard anything, Dr. Bossert, about how this might end up?
Well, the guidance document from the CDC does speak to the infection rate dictating the necessity for accommodations. So I think the simplest answer to your question is when we see the infection rate begin to drop, then we can begin to remove restrictions. Right now, as a point of clarity, the infection rate in Suffolk County was at 0.4% when we closed our doors in June, and it's at 4% now. Yesterday's infection rate for a singular day was 5.6%. In the guidance that was given to school districts for the fall of 2020, we would not have been able to open school at infection rate of over 4%.
Thank you, Mrs. Skrola. My other question or comment, I guess, is going back to the COVID safety recommendations as far as the universal guidance. I guess my frustration lies, and Ms. Mamelida, Dr. Siddiqui, Dr. Bossert, somebody, if you want to chime in, please do. We're taking recommendations from the CDC. Understand why. Taking recommendations from the Suffolk County Department of Health, I can see why. The AAP. My concern is the recommendations, and they're going off of the CDC, who's this universal organization who's making guidelines for the entire country. So my concern is, we live in Suffolk County. We have 1.5 million people in Suffolk County on 100,000-person ratio. 26 people are positive right now with COVID. Break that down further, 10,000 people, 2.6 people have COVID. So if I'm looking at our cluster, and that's Suffolk County, that's not talking about Elwood specifically, so Huntington, Green Lawn, East Northport, our cluster. My concern is we're taking recommendations that are blanketed and we're not looking, I don't know if you can, I don't know if there is specific targeted data that speaks to Elwood. But if there is, if there isn't, who cares? It's all arbitrary at this point. My concern is, and kind of piggybacking, Mrs. Skrola, at what point do we start letting these children come to school with no mask? When do we pull back a little bit? Do we meet in the middle? Do we start September, everyone wear masks? Look at two weeks, the rolling rates are going down. When they're at their desk, they can sit down and take their masks off. I think, for me, I have a hard time swallowing the pill that the CDC says, that Suffolk County even says, because it's not specific to Elwood. And I want to, I want what's best for our students. I'm not trying to knock any surrounding school districts or anybody else in Suffolk County or New York or in the state, but for me, we serve on the Board of Education. We are here for the Elwood community. My concern is, how do we look at the Elwood cluster, us? I know it's a hard question, and it's probably an impossible question to answer because we don't have. Dr. Siddiqui, we do have data, please.
Well, yeah, I don't have data.
Not.
I don't have particular data for Elwood. But I do know that when there's high transmissibility, there's more likelihood of asymptomatic transmission. And that's one of the reasons why universal masking is recommended in times of high transmissibility. And because it's more probable that someone sitting next to you that's not symptomatic can spread the virus. And the Delta variant is a lot more contagious. So it's not more severe, but it's six times more contagious. And so the likelihood of transmitting that to someone else, and then they transmit it to someone else, that's what the, what the issue is, that the contagiousness is just much higher. So your exponential rise in the transmissibility rate will increase exponentially faster than the original virus.
Sorry, we're not going to take commentary from the audience. There will be an, we're not going to take questions or comments currently from the audience. There will be an opportunity to definitely hear from everybody, and we do want to hear from everybody that wants to speak. So please don't take this as being dismissed. We are here to listen to you. It's just, we want to make sure that our dialogue gets taken care of, so then we have the opportunity to hear from you, and there will be ample opportunity to do that, I promise.
James?
Yes, Ms. Weiss.
Okay. So in line with that, over the summer, we had all our camps open and all the kids were together. What data do we have from the summer? Did we have a large number of kids spreading COVID? Getting, because I, you know, I'm just trying to see the trend of, you know, where we're going. If we had a great summer.
I just want to jump in, Ms. Weiss, because I feel, Dr. Siddiqui, I don't want my question to come out as if, I know you're an expert as a pediatric physician. I don't want you to feel that you're in the hot seat, that the questions are being targeted to you, and that you must answer these questions because they're arbitrary from us to you. So please don't feel, because, Ms. Weiss, I get the question, and I don't want you to feel as if you're the one that has Angela's question. So please don't feel that you're in a position, because some of this is data that is probably not available.
That's what I'm trying to find out. Did we track, see where we lie in?
I think as a board, when we're talking, as a discussion, I think we should be asking ourselves, is that data available? If so, how do we access it? And how do we look at it from, you know, a global standpoint that affects?
I guess that's what I'm asking.
I know, but I don't think, I just don't want Dr. Siddiqui to feel that you have to answer that question. That's the only thing that I wanted to just let you know. But I hear your question, Ms. Weiss.
You know what I'm saying? I'm just trying to connect the dots.
Correct. I mean, it's a valid question. I just don't want Dr. Siddiqui to feel she's the one to answer it. If you know the answer, Dr. Siddiqui, and you want to, by all means, please don't feel that you're being silenced at all, but don't feel that you're in the hot seat either.
No, it's okay. I mean, I do know, Mrs. Weiss, that during the time of Elwood camps, everything was outdoors. And at that time, we were still at a low transmissibility rate. So the data may not be available at that point, but we weren't really looking for it at that point.
But not all camps were outdoors. There are some camps like basketball, volleyball. There were a bunch of them indoors. So I, that, I'm just questioning. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to link the science with the rationale for what we're going to determine as a, as a protocol going forward. That's, that's where I'm coming.
So the only point that I would ask to make in support of the recommendations I've brought forward is this, and it's a simple one. I do not claim to be a medical expert. People call me doctor all day long, but if you have a heart attack, please dial 911. We are educational leaders. This is an educational institution. In matters of health and safety and in the interest of the public health of the community we serve, we turn to experts in the field. And in this particular issue, speaking about masking requirements, it is highly uncommon for every medical expert and governing body, be it the CDC, the Department of Health, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and every other medical organization, has all endorsed and supported the use of universal masking in K-12 school systems. I can't recall another topic that we have visited in our 20 years as educators, whether it was the MERS scare or, or anything else from the medical community where we turn to the medical experts, where there was universal unilateral agreement. I am not asking the board to act as medical experts. We are blessed to have Dr. Siddiqui serving on our board who can provide medical expertise and insight. However, that's not the role she plays in this particular organization. So we look to the outside experts to guide us, and the guidance is uniform and clear from every agency. So what we are deciding is whether to continue to trust the expertise of those who are experts in the field or to take a position that contradicts that. I am not comfortable taking a position that.
And for clarity, we're not taking that position tonight. We're going to hear from the committee input.
But my recommendation is my recommendation. And there it is up on the screen for everyone to see. And the rationale and reason for it is because I am not a medical expert. So I rely upon those that are R, those scientists that represent the CDC, the physicians that represent the Department of Health and the American Academy of Pediatrics. I rely upon the expert knowledge, education of those individuals to act in a manner in which they feel is in the best interest of our students and our community. And I am in a position as the leader of this organization to accept that recommendation because I have no basis in which to reject it.
Thank you, Dr. Bossert.
I just have a question. Dr. Bossert, do you remember off the top of your head? I remember a chart of approximately how many children were quarantined. I know we had some significant outbreaks in the high school. We had to shut down. And I, I forget, like overall for the year, we had a pretty significant amount of quarantines in a much, much lower percentage.
It was hundreds of students and thousands of days lost.
At a much lower infection rate. We haven't been at 5-point-something percent in New York. Well, in January, we were, we're up by 12%.
Under last year's guidelines, Mr. Mamelida, that were prescribed by the New York State Department of Health, we would not be able to open the doors with the infection rate as high as it is.
Correct.
So this may be an inquiry for the board to ask the Suffolk County Department of Health, why are we at a rate of infection? And they have not taken a position to mandate. They're the next governing body. If the governor's office has yet to do so, I think our question lies with Suffolk County Department of Health. If they feel they heavily strong that masks should be worn, why is it a suggestion or recommendation versus a mandate?
I asked that question, Mr. Tomio, and the response was they do not feel they have the legal authority to make a mandate as a county department of health. They're relying upon the state to take that action. And there is great confidence from the Suffolk County Department of Health that the governor will direct that action when she is sworn in on August 25th.
But a positive COVID case in a masked, unmasked child, whatever, the quarantine is a mandate or is that an administrative?
Quarantine is a directive of the Department of Health. They do have the authority to direct a quarantine to maintain public health and safety.
And I guess, I guess my question is, and I don't, it's just out in the air. I don't think anybody answers. What makes this different, I guess, from the fact that when strep was going around like crazy, we didn't quarantine? When we had the flu and it was going around like crazy, we didn't quarantine? I'm just, I'm confused.
I would assume, Mrs. Weiss, it's the mortality rate. I think it's the number of individuals globally that have died due to COVID-19 in comparison to those other ailments that would likely.
We're saying now that we're going forward with the vaccine and with the Delta variant, it's not the morbidity rate, it's just the rate of spread. And for any of us who've had kids in the, just the flu went through strep. I mean, I can't even tell you how many times I was constantly running to the doctor with my kids. can't even tell you how many times I was constantly running to the doctor with my kids, and they wouldn't even clean the desks, we couldn't even get them, so it's just, I mean, I know this is not, this is just one of those things that's like.
I think one of the things that's concerning is that two-thirds of our student population is not currently eligible for the vaccine. I would agree that if we had 100% vaccination amongst our students and staff, these mitigation factors would not be necessary.
But, and, there was no vaccine for strep, there was no, I'm just, I don't know.
I'm going to ask again, I'm sorry to be redundant, please just hold, I, I know you're frustrated, or you're excited to speak, and, and we hear you, we've gotten emails, we're, we see an attendance this evening, there will be an opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weiss. It is a free world, but this is a public meeting that we're holding, holding tonight, and there are rules and procedures that we have to follow. Thank you. Are there any other questions from the Board of Education for Dr. Bossert on his presentation thus far?
Just have one quick question. If a child is vaccinated and they're sitting next to someone that has COVID, do they have to quarantine, or do they only have to quarantine if they're symptomatic? Because I know the rules keep changing on that. Thank you.
The guidance we've received for vaccinated individuals, which would include portions of our students over age 12 and our staff, is that they are to self-monitor for three to five days and to be tested if they become symptomatic.
So they can still come to school if they're not feeling sick at all?
That is my understanding of the current guidelines, yes.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Bossert, thank you for allowing questions and comments on that presentation.
Certainly.
I know you have listed the NICE guidance, do you want to do that and then do?
You know, Mr. Tommy, I just included some links to the guidance we've received, I've since placed all of the guidance we've received on the district website. That's for review by the Board of Education and any member of the community who's interested to see it. I have no interest in going through the documents, I think my presentation summarized the key points that people are interested in seeing.
I figured, just didn't know if you wanted to highlight anything?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. As promised, we are up to residents' remarks. The Board encourages all residents to attend its meetings and its action, and its section of the agenda affords them the opportunity to speak. Persons wishing to speak should identify themselves and any organizations they represent at the meeting. Comments related to the district business or any agenda item should be kept as brief as possible and may not exceed three minutes, Board Policy 2351. Questions or comments concerning matters which are not on the agenda will be taken under consideration and may be discontinued by the President. Public discussion of matters relating to staff, students, or others at which their reputation, privacy, or right to due process could be in some way violated is prohibited. So the floor is now open for residents' remarks.
Ms. Mamalita, that number you were looking for is 478 students were quarantined.
Hi, my name is Agapi Bell, and I'm a mom representing just myself and no other organization that I may be affiliated with. My questions are, I think, going to be straightforward. With the plan for this year, are any teachers going to be remote themselves while the kids are in class like we had last year at the high school?
No, all of our teachers will be present in their classrooms.
Okay, no one's applied, okay, well, none are doing it.
I, I think it's an important point, Mrs. Bell, and thank you for clarifying, I should have included in my presentation. While we are talking primarily about students, there will be no remote options for our faculty and staff, just as students would have to provide some type of medical documentation, the same would hold true. The COVID allowances that were made for last year were unique to last year, and all of our faculty and staff members are expected to work in the manner in which we are accustomed to.
Great, thank you. I will say that the two that we had who were full remote themselves most of the year did do a great job, so that might just be them. But my other question is, piggybacking on what Mr. Tomio was saying, in the scenario when there's a positive student who is not wearing a mask, but my child who is within three feet of them but vaccinated, do they have to quarantine? If, the scenario of no masks, let's say?
Yeah, that's the point of clarity that was becoming confusing earlier that I was trying to make. If either party is unmasked, then the quarantine would be necessary.
Regardless of vaccination, vaccination status?
No, that would add a different wrinkle into it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so a vaccinated individual is not subject to quarantine if they're exposed to COVID-19.
No matter how close they were to the other person, right?
They are to self-monitor for three to five days and have themselves tested if any symptoms emerge.
Okay, great. So, the follow-up to that, that makes me think my children are all of eligibility and vaccinated, so for me personally, it's, I, I mean, I understand the whole rationale for universal masking in classrooms where the children cannot be vaccinated. What, what keeps bugging me is the high school, the seventh and eighth graders, if the whole room is vaccinated, do we, as a district, have the discretion, does the teacher have discretion to say, all 15 of us, because I love the spacing, which means smaller class sizes, so that's my silver lining, could a teacher say, if we're all 15 of us in this room are vaccinated, can we just talk and not wear the masks? Is that your jurisdiction to do that?
It's not part of the guidance at this time, to this, to make discrepancies between vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals. When we did ask students to self-report in the spring regarding vaccination status, we learned at that time that students were vaccinated, about 50%.
Yeah, but I, I think in the summer, like, two of my three got vaccinated in the summer, and I know a lot of their friends just got their shots now, and so I think that's going to rise. I mean, my concerns are for my cohort, so.
Thank you.
So my other question, I know I'm, it was my time out.
Three minutes, sorry.
Oh, okay, it's about sport.
There will be a second opportunity for residents' remarks later in the evening. Thank you, Ms. Bell. You're welcome.
Dr. Bossert, I have a question about that. Would that be a HIPAA violation?
At this time, we're not permitted to request, we're not permitted to direct students or staff to report their vaccination status. There is some discussion amongst council about voluntarily sharing vaccination status, and we, we came across that when students were directed to quarantine, and they said, wait, I'm vaccinated, and we said, okay, and demonstrated proof. But we can't require students to report vaccination status at this time, nor can we of staff.
Thank you.
Can I have a follow-up question?
Yep.
Would you be able to, just as Mrs. Bell suggested, have students that reported to be vaccinated grouped together with certain, in certain classrooms?
I, I think.
Is that allowed?
I think we would really struggle to do that, Dr. Siddiqui. A, we'd count upon, it would be contingent upon everyone self-reporting their vaccination status, and B, we would start to build sections by vaccination status rather than instructional needs, and I think we would struggle to do that.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
Sir?
Okay, Leonard Suskin here, representing myself and family Suskin with two students in the district, one at Boyd, one at the high school. First off a statement, thank you for putting this together, and thank you for following the guidelines and the science on this. It gives us a lot more comfort to know that we're doing this. And I wanted to speak on what you said about one unmasked individual. Either way, if the person testing positive is masked, to me, this is one of our values as a community that we look out for each other. I'm vaccinated. I'm not wearing the mask for myself. I'm wearing it for you, and you, and you, and everybody else here. This is what we should be teaching our children. Four million people have died across the world. We have a chance to stop it. We have a chance for this to end, and I implore the rest of my fellow residents to think about that as a value. And I thank you. Two questions quickly. One, will bus schedules be available? Because we struggle to answer the bus question without knowing the timing of it, because that impacts work schedules. And two, with the guidelines, are there guidelines yet for music, specifically band, or I suppose chorus, where there's breath?
Yes.
May I? You may, Dr. Bossert, thank you.
Transportation, we will use our very typical arrival and dismissal procedures, assuming the largest percentage of our students will be riding buses, which was the need for the survey. So the time that pre-2020, you typically put your child on the bus is what you could reasonably expect the route to look like for September.
Nobody can remember that long ago.
We'll make sure, I will ask our transportation department to try to put out as much information on the website as possible. Ms. Dunkle, if you could please make a note to follow up on that tomorrow, I'd appreciate it. And to answer your question about music instruction, yes, we received guidance regarding choral music instruction and wind instruments that we have been asked to maintain the six feet of distance. So we can still have those performance groups, we just need to provide them with adequate space to perform, which, in full transparency, is a challenge at John Glenn High School this year, because we are doing a wonderful, over a million dollar facelift to the high school auditorium. It is going to be a beautiful jewel in our crown when it is completed, but it will not be completed until around Christmas time. So we are going to struggle to find adequate space for our band and our chorus until which time the auditorium is complete. Ms. Brzinski and her team at the high school are working very creatively to find that six feet of spacing that's required for those groups to meet.
Okay, thank you, and again, thank you for your commitment to safety and to following the science. And thank you, Dr. Siddiqui, for your extra expertise here.
Thank you, Mr. Suskin.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Suskin. Next resident?
Hi, my name is Jenny Zethner. I've been invited here by multiple families in the district. I'm a pediatric nurse practitioner. I've been working with children for over 25 years. Throughout the entire pandemic, I did not stop working with any of my patients. As Dr. Siddiqui probably is aware, we've seen more reactions from wearing the masks, such as anxiety, depression, the suicide rates are up across the entire country. This cannot be denied, it is associated with various aspects of the pandemic, including the use of masks in children. I have seen more patients come in with reactions to wearing the mask, physical and mental, than I have seen patients suffer really at all with COVID symptoms. COVID in children is very minimal. It's the rare case that we see a patient hospitalized. In fact, the most recent hospitalization rates here on Long Island, I apologize, these are CDC guided, this is CDC data, is 0.9%. The pediatric hospitalization rate across the country is 0.9. It has not budged there since January. So I understand the media is, you know, I, I am aware that the Delta variant is rising, I'm aware that that is causing less symptoms in adult patients, and it is, again, not affecting our children. The pediatric hospitalization rate was 0.9 again since January. At its height, it was 3.8, just to give you some perspective. I did want to just touch base on, with Dr. Siddiqui, in regard to, you commented that masks have been proven here, I believe you said in this district, that masks worked here. Was there a study done in your district? Again, I'm not from this district, I have three children, I'm from a different district, but I'm just, I don't know, was there a study done here? Because to the best of my knowledge, I have not seen one single solitary peer-reviewed study proving that masks do anything. In fact, there's volumes of data proving that masks do not do anything, and I'd be more than happy to share all of that data with the board, I will give it to the parents to share with you. These are unprecedented times, there's 32 states in the country right now who are in the same position as New York, where the decision has been left up to the school districts, which is really completely unfair, since you're a Board of Education and not Health. 32 states are doing this right now, districts in all those 32 states. This is ripping communities apart. The fact that you may or may not make a mandate on families is incredibly stressful, it should be a choice at this point. The, you know, the recovery rate from COVID in children is 99.997%. Somebody commented about the flu, you know, I know my time is just about up, I do want to make one statement, and Dr. Siddiqui, this is with all due respect, because I really truly don't understand where this data came from. You recently put out an article in a local newspaper that said that children, I'm going to read it, so I did not mess it up.
It is the three minutes, sorry.
That COVID has already killed over four times more children than during a typical flu season.
Excuse me, there is another resident's remark, she has an opportunity to come up.
That's fine, I can give the question to somebody else, because I think it's something that everybody would like. Thank you so much for taking the time.
There is a policy that we follow, there is another resident's remarks. I, I don't want to shut you guys down, but it's where we're headed, so I'm trying to follow our policy. I've said there are another resident's remarks, I'm not trying to cut anybody off, but there are a number of people who'd like to speak this evening. Please allow everyone have an opportunity, and there'll be another time later in the night. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Dr. Thomas Fisher, I'm a career emergency medicine specialist, currently working in urgent care. And the main point I'd like to make is that COVID is not in any way a serious pediatric illness. I have been working in urgent care since the start of the COVID pandemic. I have not seen one child with symptoms of, with COVID symptoms, anything even close to a bad cold. For those reasons, a mandate, a mask mandate is not at all a good idea, it should be left up 100% to the parents. And there is not a single study to show in a school environment that mask-wearing has any effect on preventing transmission. So that's the main point I just wanted to make, that COVID is not a pediatric illness that is even approaching a bad cold. Thank you.
Sir, sir, are you a resident? Are you a resident?
No, I was asked to speak here on behalf of one of the, of one of the families.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. I will remind everybody, this is residents' remarks, so please, if you are not a resident, have a resident speak on your behalf if you'd like, but please keep this to residents' remarks. Thank you, and thank you. Next gentleman.
My name is Alex, I'm a resident, and.
Could you just give your last name, please?
Shifrin.
Thank you, Alex Shifrin.
My daughter is going into first grade at Harley, and I just want to speak to like the arbitrariness of like what we're doing to protect our children. So, our children have to wear masks, and the only time they could take them off is during lunch, so they could eat pizza crunchers and mozzarella sticks. I'm wondering what the CDC, CDC says about childhood obesity, and what kind of damage that could do to a child? And I, I just want to talk about like, everyone's talking about infection rates, like, these aren't infection rates of the population, this is the amount of people who are positive from those who are tested, correct? So we're saying like a five point something, a positivity rate or infection rate, that's not 5% of the Long Island population, am I correct? So like, when we're talking like, we're throwing around numbers like 5%, there were like 600 people who tested positive yesterday in Suffolk County. That's 5% of what? 30,000? So 600, there are 1. how many million people, 4, 5 million people in Suffolk County? So like, we really need to keep these numbers in perspective, and what these percentages are actually percentages of. And I just feel as if like, my, I don't know how many people, how many children from the Elwood district were hospitalized last year because of COVID-19, I think my guess is zero. But like, I feel as if my child is probably more likely to be hospitalized playing chicken knockout in gym. And I, I, I say it as a joke, because I think we need to get a little, like, a little levity in the air here, it's a little tense, but like, seriously, seriously, like, my child is more likely to be hurt playing a gym game, but like, we're sure as heck not asking all our children to put on football helmets when we're playing chicken knockout, right? So like, everyone just needs to keep this in perspective about the arbitrary and capriciousness of these, of what we're enforcing, and I think there needs to be a review built into this. If this is going to be, and you guys aren't going to budge, that's fine. Everyone here in June or July, I'm sorry, June, said that they supported parent choice, and no one has even said the word parent choice in this meeting today. No one on the board mentioned parent choice at all, wasn't even, wasn't even spoken. So at the end of the day, I think we're not in a state of emergency anymore, we're all adults in here, these are our children, we know the risks, and I think it should be up to us to decide if my first grader who's learning how to read and write and vocabulary is going to have to do that without being able to see their teacher's lips. It's ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shifrin.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Karen Burkhart. I was asked to speak here by members of the community.
Is there anything you're going to say, Stephen, that the other doctors or the PA did? did not say, just because you're not a resident and this is residence remarks?
I will say something that has not been said. I'm a child and adolescent psychiatrist, and I've been serving this community, Long Island community, for 30 years. And I think that it's been an unprecedented time and unprecedented challenges that the school districts have had to face, and my hat's off to you for having to work as hard as you, as hard as you have to make everyone safe and to follow the guidelines. However, in a year and a half, we've learned a lot. We know more now than we did then about how this particular epidemic affects children. We know that children are not heavily affected by this particular virus. We know that they are not super-spreaders when they're healthy children, they're not asymptomatic carriers, that's been well documented. By the way, I have documentation here that I will present to the board and make available. So my, my presentation is really not about the validity of universal masking, although I did look on the American Academy of Pediatrics website as to where they took their guidelines from, and it went back to the CDC and an article that was, a study that was done that was case-controlled. And the reduction in spread of the virus using universal masking was somewhere between 0.5 and 1% reduction in incidence. So when you look at that number, you have to take into account, at what cost are we preventing 1% of cases to, by masking 100% of our children? My perspective on that is what has it, what's the collateral damage to our children from a psychological standpoint? What is the social and emotional component to that? And what are we seeing in our kids? And what we are able to document is tremendous increases in mental illness, in anxiety, depression, panic attacks. Kids who are wearing masks are afraid, they're ashamed, they're afraid that something might happen, that the mask might fall off, they might get in trouble. They're afraid to talk to each other, they're afraid to be with each other. What we're masking out and what we're masking in is their individuality, their personality, their ability to express themselves, their ability to communicate effectively. So the real cost to our children and to the community at large, when you talk about the greater good, the greater good has to do with our community at large and the well-being, the social and emotional developmental well-being of our children and our community at large. So I would urge you to take that into consideration. Yes, we have to keep people safe from the virus. Our children are not at risk from this virus, they are not spreading it, they are not major carriers of it. But what cost is universal masking going to inflict upon them? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Burkhart. Next resident?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Elena Vaviakis Narvez. I have two children in the Elwood School District. My oldest is going into seventh grade, and my youngest is going into sixth grade. First and foremost, I know that you're in a very difficult position, all of you. I know you can't make everybody happy, and you're not going to make everybody happy. So thank you for what you're doing, I know that it's not easy. That said, my kids, both of them, were in the Elwood sport camps this summer. In Elwood sport camps, they sat in this middle school cafeteria side by side with absolutely no distance required, social distancing between them, no masks, indoors in the cafeteria, sitting at the tables like normal kids, and they did not get sick. None of their friends got sick. They were also playing in this gym altogether, hundreds of kids, no masks, no sickness. There was not one day of camp was closed at all because of a sick child. I think that's something that maybe that needs to be considered. I mean, my kids have been to the movies, they've been to Adventureland, they've been running around since school ended with no masks on. And now they have to come back to school in September with masks, it's really sad for them. I mean, it was a really difficult year. I think the biggest challenge that was mentioned by the previous psychologist speaker is the camaraderie that they have with their peers and with students. There's a real lack of emotion when you're behind a mask. Like, I see your eyes, but I don't know, you see so much more when you can see somebody's face, that's probably why we have them. But I guess I would really consider the thinking about the camps and the kids all being together and what you're asking them to do after a summer of freedom with not ever getting sick. And why can't kids get sick anyway? They're kids, they get sick. My kids haven't had strep throat, haven't had a cold, haven't had anything. I mean, kids are kids, they're going to get germs, and they need to have an immune system too. So please give this a little bit more thought. It's, give her, give them, give us a choice, you know? And with that said, if there is, and I don't know how this would work, but if there's a teacher or a student that has extenuating circumstances in a class, I'm more than happy to have my kids wear a mask in that situation. Not looking for anybody to get sick or hurt, but I mean, let's, let's have a little bit more perspective and reasoning and common sense, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhart.
Good evening, I'm Erin Abisher, I have three children in the district. My question is going back to the busing, I just would like a little bit of clarification on how that is going to take place and the distancing that's going to be maintained on the bus as opposed to in the school. So in the school, we said that the children will be maintained three feet from each other. So what is that going to look like on the bus?
Yeah, interestingly, the guidelines that govern transportation are different than that in the classroom. My assumption is, is because of the shorter duration children spend in transit than they do in school. So the capacity that we are permitted to use on the bus is the adult capacity of the bus, which pretty much amounts to two children per seat or 44 total riders on the bus.
Okay, so my child sits on a bus for 40 minutes by the time he leaves school and arrives at home. So sitting that close to an individual for 40 minutes is okay?
That's why universal masking is required on school buses.
Okay. So when it's convenient, we change things around?
I didn't change anything.
It's not convenient, it's not convenient for my children to sit in school behind a mask all day long.
I'm not sure of the parallel you're making, but I am.
I didn't hear you, what?
I am explaining the guidance that we were given.
Well, as a board, as administrators, we should be questioning these things. Why is it okay in one situation and not in another?
Thank you, Ms. Abisher.
Good evening, my name is Andre Berknell, I'm the father of three here in the, in the school district. Mike, you guys can hear me, right?
We can, Mr. Berknell.
Okay. I just, I guess part of what I wanted to go to, I, you know, coming back to a couple of comments I made, I hope you don't mind, I wrote down a few of these things here, but with, with this coronavirus, I know we started out last year in March, and I'm also a teacher in New York City, and I know, you know, we started out with 15 days to slow the spread, and, and I think we did significantly slow down the spread and not overwhelm the hospitals. And I know at this point, you know, we're starting to hear stories of this coming back, but we're now 18 months later, and I worry, I don't, going back to what Tom Scirola said before, I don't see where the end game is. I'm worried about, is this going to last forever? Is it going to be masks forever? I've, I want my children to know a world where they can see the facial expressions of other people. I was in a store sometime in the last few months, and there was a woman who had her toddler breaking down. As a father of three children who wear once toddlers, I tried to smile at her to console her, and I realized she couldn't see my smile, and I probably just looked like a creep. So I really, going back to what we were saying before about the data and all the data that's presented, Dr. Barcer, you'd mentioned before the American Academy of Pediatrics. I read something from the American Academy of Pediatrics recently, sometime in the last few days, where they said that students, especially young elementary-age students, that it was not important for them to see the facial expressions or the teachers pronouncing the words. Now, if the American Academy of Pediatrics had said in that paper that, okay, it is not as important as preventing the spread of COVID, I might have had a little bit more faith in, in what they are saying, but it really, really bothers me that they would say that, no, it doesn't matter, kids don't need that, especially young kids. And so, again, I just, I, I know that we're all trying to base what we're doing here based on the science and based on the data. I just feel like that there are so many, I have read personally, and I emailed you guys an article the other day from, from a doctor at John Hopkins, an opinion piece from the Wall Street Journal from a doctor from John Hopkins University, or John Hopkins Hospital, I forget the difference, I'm sorry, but I know that he, he spoke out significantly against masks, and it's not universal, not everyone in the medical industry is agreeing about the, you know, you had two doctors here who were speaking out against making our, our children wear the masks. And finally, Dr. Siddiqui, I know you had mentioned how this seems, and this is all what I've read as well, that this seems to be much more transmissible, but, and I don't know if this is the word you used, but much less lethal. And I, I said this last year, I know my time is up, I said this last year to someone, and I was just so worried, I was like, you know what, just give it to me and, and let it pass through the, the community. I don't want anyone to die, but I also, I worry, what is the cost? Is, is the cure worse than the actual disease and this problem? Thank you very much, guys, have a wonderful.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Chris Fox, I believe all of you know me by this point. We know through historical science that respiratory diseases such as COVID, the flu, RSV, enterovirus, and even the common cold, the rhinovirus cannot be eradicated. Oddly, we do not mitigate for these viruses, and they run rampant through the school regardless. Since there will always be a risk of infection, we have to look at the acceptable risk so we can get back to normal as we have with all the other viruses. The acceptable risk is a balance. You have to weigh physical health, academics, mental health of the students. One cannot outweigh the other, or you no longer have a functioning school, or for that matter, functioning students. Presently, physical health is still the primary while academics, and even worse, the emotional health, the children are taking a backseat. We are not following the actual science, because if we were, we'd understand that the mortality rate for children is practically nonexistent. And if your child catches this virus, the vast majority do very well with it. But yet, the acceptable risk still remains low. You do not have to be a child therapist to understand the damage you are doing to these kids by telling them. Kids, we know you travel, eat out, socialize with friends, family shopping, attend concerts and sporting events, and you could do all this maskless. But when you walk through the doors of your school, you must wear a mask. Why, a child might ask? The answer is, the virus can hurt you. A child might ask, well, I lived the rest of my life without a mask, and I'm perfectly fine. The answer, unfortunately, well, these are the rules. You have to follow them, or you can't stay here. What an incredible message we are sending to these kids about the school they're supposed to love. I really wish you would take into consideration the mental capacity, what you're doing to these children emotionally. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Good evening, Amy Kern. Last year, we started school with more mitigation measures in place than were required by the reopening guidelines. With each step forward, district leadership expressed concerns about resolding closures, but that never happened. We saw little to no school transmission and only isolated instances of group quarantine, despite the unavailability of a vaccine to most of the school population. Our summer programs largely unmasked, both indoors and outdoors, have also proved successful. You refer to yourselves as being handcuffed by New York State and Suffolk County guidelines. The New York State of Emergency has now ended, and with it, the governor's overreaching emergency powers. New York State Department of Health has declared school districts to be reestablished as the controlling entity for schools, your handcuffs have been removed. The agencies recommend but do not and cannot require universal masking. The CDC has cited one pediatric masking study that was conducted in a hospital over a year ago. This study involved the observation of 47 children for 30 minutes. The scientists noted that further studies were needed to evaluate possible longer-term changes. No follow-up study has been referenced. Dr. Fauci stated last week that he hoped that there will be no long-term effects to our children due to masking. I know the proposed plan does not indicate vaccine mandates, but in an August 4th letter to Long Island Superintendent's AEP representatives, including Dr. Siddiqui, recommended universal masking until local positivity rates are reduced or student vaccination rate increases dramatically. The AEP also suggested the exclusion from or weekly testing of unvaccinated students from interscholastic sports and activities. New York State Education Department has called for high-risk sports and indoor extracurricular activities to be virtual or canceled unless all participants are vaccinated. Where is the data for these recommendations? High-risk sports returned to Elwood without incident at a time when the community transmission rate was two to three times the current rate, and zero students were vaccinated. The AEP's most recent report shows little difference between the overall percentage of total cumulative cases attributable to children from the start of the pandemic until now. COVID-associated pediatric hospitalizations and deaths continue to be extremely uncommon. Vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals are equally capable of contracting and transmitting COVID-19. Implementing these coercive and exclusionary policies would result in the kind of ostracism and divide that Elwood seeks to prevent as a no-place-for-hate school and is at odds with the district's inclusivity and mental health awareness goals, as is separating students in classrooms by vaccine status. There are no mandates, laws, or emergency powers precluding you from preventing, providing parent choice. Please allow parents to make informed decisions after consulting with their own family doctor as the only expert of their child's specific medical history. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I, if I had a little time left?
Yeah, three seconds, you did a great, I've got to get in, so if you.
Okay, I'll, I'll come back at the.
Thank you, Ms. Kern.
Mrs. Kern, since you were kind enough to provide your remarks in advance in the meeting, I'll just share with, with the board two clarifying points to what you addressed. I'm not sure we can refer to 500 cases of student quarantine as small, isolated events, and I'm not sure we can say the athletic seasons went off without incident when we canceled games, seasons, playoff competitions, quarantined entire teams, and had students contract COVID on the athletic fields. So while I understand and appreciate your opinion and perspective, I'm not sure I would agree with those specific terms you used.
Okay, I appreciate your feedback. I was referring more to the quarantines, which are not prohibitive of school, and I was not aware that there were very many cases of transmission that occurred on the fields, it was more quarantine.
I understand that, and I understand that's probably the case amongst the largest percentage of the community, which is why I wanted to repeat my remarks. And one of the things I think is important for you to understand and the community to understand, is that one of the things that I have been charged with doing and attempting to do is to limit the amount of lost time in the classroom to every extent possible. So while an individual child needing to quarantine for a brief period of time may not be viewed as a entirely detrimental activity, the cumulative impact of that occurring is very detrimental to our overall goal of having students present in the classroom experiencing instruction. So taking measures to try to mitigate the amount of instructional time that students miss is at the forefront of thought.
I, I understand that, as I've mentioned before, I do think that the possibility of quarantine is another factor that parents need to consider in making choice.
Thank you, Mrs. Kern.
Thank you, Mrs. Kern. If the next resident could just please hold for one second? Thank you, I appreciate it. Board members, we do have a policy 1230 that states that our residence remarks are limited to 30 minutes. With that being said, we are able to extend them by the majority vote of the board, so at this time, may I have a motion for the following? The Board of Education hereby extends the first resident's remarks by 30 minutes. Motion by Dr. Siddiqui, seconded by Mrs. Weiss. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Tom, you know, I apologize for not suggesting this sooner, but if I may suggest, there is a second invitation for public input following the consent agenda, and in deference to some of the individuals that are present because of the action items on the consent agenda, perhaps I could request the board vote on the consent agenda and then reopen the second invitation for residents' remarks for as long as the board sees fit to entertain our residents.
Are we going to move on?
I think that's.
Yes, I agree, I just want to make sure, then we're going to close residence remarks, number one, go through our consent agenda, recognize those who are in attendance, and then we can move on.
If our residents waiting to speak just want to have a seat, this is a two-minute. consent agenda operation.
It is very quick.
Thank you for your patience, and thank you, board.
We're not stopping residents' remarks. There are just some people in attendance tonight that are not residents, that are being recognized this evening. So we're just going to hold off on the residents' remarks for a moment, recognize them, and then reopen back up after our consent agenda vote to the community for further residents' remarks. And if the second residents' remarks exceeds the time allotted, the 30 minutes, the board will then take the similar vote that we just took to extend residents' remarks, to make sure that we are able to hear everybody that would like to speak this evening. Okay, thank you. So closing, right, the first residents' remarks, we are up to discussion items, can we-
We can table that if the board elects to, and then reengage it.
Any objections to tabling action item H? Seeing none, thank you. That brings us up to our consent agenda, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda on the agenda this evening? Motion, Mrs. Momalito, seconded by Dr. Siddiqui. Questions or comments? I know we do have, do you want to make your comment now, Dr. Bossert, after we approve it? Good motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
May I comment?
Now you may, sorry, the vote first.
Terrific. For those in attendance, the board just unanimously approved many action items that speak to the governance of the school district and the personnel matters that were included within. One of those personnel matters that I would like to highlight is the appointment of an assistant principal for Elwood Middle School. For those of you that are not aware, Ms. Valley, who has held that position very capably and admirably for the last number of years, was recently appointed as our Director of Math Science Technology, creating a vacancy for a very important position of assistant principal in this middle school. After an extensive search and thorough process, and the board met with the candidate earlier tonight, I would like to formally introduce or reintroduce a special education teacher from the building, who will now be taking on the role of assistant principal, Ms. Julie Ballelo, who has joined in here tonight with her family. Ms. Ballelo, congratulations, and welcome to your new position. For those of you that are not familiar with Ms. Ballelo, she's been a special educator in our district for the last four years, having worked 12 years prior to that in the Lynn Brook and Plainview Old Bethpage School Districts, also as a special educator. She is a talented, dynamic leader who will bring a great deal of passion, enthusiasm, and ideas to the office in support of the great vision that Dr. Moran has created for this middle school. Dr. Moran, thank you for being here. Dr. Toscano, thank you for being here. Mrs. Shanahan. And Ms. Ballelo, if you have some comments that you would like to make to the board, you can step up to the microphone yourself.
Ms. Ballelo, as you're walking to the microphone, I just want to take this opportunity on behalf of the Board of Education, our community, we welcome you to a new role, not to the district, but to the new role. We wish you much, much success, and our students are very fortunate to have you in the role. So thank you.
Thank you so much. I just want to thank the board and Dr. Bossert for this opportunity. I'm so excited to be taking on this new role and working with Dr. Moran to do wonderful things at EMS. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ballelo. And congratulations to your husband and your parents, who I believe joined you here tonight, and I guess you learned a little bit about school board governance, and if you had any interest in serving your own communities moving forward, perhaps you want to rethink that. But hopefully, it was a learning experience for you as well. Ms. Ballelo will be effective and in the office beginning tomorrow. She has already been working in an internship capacity for the last several months, helping the middle school to get ready for the return of students, and I know that she will be a wonderful new member of the team. And thank you for being with us tonight, and thank you to the Board of Education for supporting the recommendation. We look for wonderful things from Ms. Ballelo moving forward. I think our middle school parents would be interested to know that Ms. Ballelo presented to myself and the cabinet a wonderful blueprint for moving forward, the restorative justices' practices that we are looking to bring to the middle school. This is an area of expertise with Ms. Ballelo, and we look forward to her helping Dr. Moran to continue this vision that we are moving towards at the middle school. And with that, if you would like to go get a good night's sleep, so you can be in the office bright and early tomorrow morning, you're certainly invited to do that.
For the sake of your parents, run. All right. To the residents that were at the microphone, I'll be asked to sit down. We are now open to the second residents' remarks. I thank you for giving us the opportunity to recognize our new assistant principal. The floor is now reopened for our second residents' remarks.
I'm a resident here of Elwood. My name is Kelly Focianos. I was actually at home watching the board meeting, and I texted my neighbor that I had to come in here to share my support for your plans this evening. First, I wanted to thank the Board of Education, and to all the teachers, staff, and administration, custodians, and the team of nurses, who have worked tirelessly to support our students in our community in every capacity for the past year plus and a half. My daughter is about to take her very first steps at Harley in a couple of weeks. She's starting out in kindergarten, and while it certainly wasn't a year that I would have imagined her to walk into school with a mask on, I am so grateful that she can. So here I am tonight, I wanted to stand up here to share with you how wholeheartedly, I'm reading from my notes again, how much I support the reopening guidance that you've shared this evening. I'm an educator on Long Island. Thank you, Dr. Siddiqui, for your statements and remarks earlier. I think people need to really turn to the experts in the field to find their research and support, and while I fully understand people's rights outside of the school, and they have the rights to mask, not mask, vax, or not vaccinate themselves and their children, I do believe that when we're engaging in school in a community setting that is for the public and the good of our community, it is important that we follow the guidance from the experts. I know I'm standing up here with a few people that are supporting me. Last year was a year of change. We started out in some districts remote, some hybrid, some home, some students elected to stay from home for many different reasons. To have a year like last year again would only be detrimental to our students' education, their academic success, and their social, emotional well-being. I understand that masks can prevent people from seeing their smiles, but there are other ways that you can communicate, and being in a school building with your friends is far superior than sitting home in front of a computer for months or weeks at a time. The unknown is, could change. We could have success in the few weeks or months ahead, we could have better support or better guidance that could change from the CDC, and at that time, I hope that the Board of Education would also change their guidance recommendations. But I just wanted to come here tonight to say that I strongly support your plans, and I know that there are many others in our community that do too. I just had to come tonight to support you, and know that we got your back. So thank you for supporting my daughter as she enters her first year of kindergarten in about three weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kern. Next resident?
Hi, my name is Pat Miletta, a resident of the district. I have four children to school age within the district. My comment is really just a question. In the absence of any mandate from the governor, is the board even able to consider it parent choice, or are all these comments and concerns and questions really just a moot point? Bottom line is, it's just a question. Is parental choice even going to be considered, or is it not even a remote, no pun intended, possibility?
Thank you for your question.
That's the bottom line. It is a question, so if anyone is able to answer.
Is it Ms. Palmetto? Sorry.
Question.
But your name, was it Ms. Palmetto?
Pat Miletta.
Pat, thank you, and thank you for your question.
And in the interest of managing my expectations, as well as my children's expectations.
Okay, so I can jump in, you can take it, Dr. Bossert?
No, I'm happy to answer the question. Right now, the guidance is just that. I use that word very carefully during my presentation, and very purposefully. In the absence of a directive from the governor's office or the New York State Department of Health, it will be up to myself and the administration of the district to make a recommendation of what the reopening guidelines will be. It does not require a vote of the Board of Education, it does not require the support of the Board of Education. However, as a superintendent who has worked hand-in-hand with the Board of Education and the community throughout the process, I think I would be ill-advised to present a plan that doesn't have the consensus of support from the Board of Education. So absent a directive from the state on September 2nd, we will look at all the input that we received from the community, both tonight and through the portal that we've established, and I know that there are 71 residents watching remotely right now, so there's a lot of interest in this plan. I will make sure that everyone has the opportunity to review the plan. We review all the feedback we will get back, and absent a directive from the state, we will look for board consensus on that plan on September 2nd. Could parent choice be the consensus of the board? Most certainly could.
Okay, thank you.
It's not my recommendation. I've been very clear about that, but it could be the consensus of the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palmetto. I don't start the clock till you start speaking, don't worry.
My name is Christina Bellini. I have one son that's going into middle school, and this works perfect from the last resident. I know you think that mandates are coming, that there's, you know, ultimately, there will be no choices. And I understand also that it's safest to follow guidance that you've seen, that you're given. My ask, just to all of you, is that as you get mandates, or guidance, or what you get, to just look at it for inconsistencies, or things that you don't think make sense, or things that you know are not in the best interest of the children socially or mentally, and to please question and advocate for us, to push back for us, to write a letter, you know, questioning things. There were other boards and other schools that I know did some of that towards the end of last year, that helped get the masks removed outside, and things like that. Your collective voice is so much more powerful than ours, and so, you know, individual voices. So I would just ask to keep, you know, look at it and question, and please do push back for us, because you're more powerful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Thank you for coming back up, I appreciate it.
Hi, I just want to say thank you very much for allowing this. I've been to so many board meetings across Long Island, as I've been advocating for children.
If I may, I just restate your name for the record, I'm sorry.
Jennifer Zethner.
Thank you, Ms. Zethner.
Pediatric nurse practitioner. And just so your community can appreciate you a little bit more, most Board of Eds do not allow you to ask them point-blank questions. They don't allow for engagement back and forth, that's just part of their bylaws. So you guys are very fortunate that you can ask somebody a question, and they'll answer it. I just wanted to finish up what I was stating before, and that was just addressed to Dr. Siddiqui, that you had stated that masks were proven to be effective, and was there a study done here for that? Because unless I heard you, I'm not sure if I, you can clarify, I didn't hear you.
If you could direct that question to Dr. Bossert or myself, just because Dr. Siddiqui doesn't oversee the happenings or the studies that take place within the school district?
No, no, she made the statement, in her opening statement, she made a statement that masks have been proven to work here in the Elwood School District. I believe that's what she said.
I can clarify.
If you may, Dr. Siddiqui.
Yeah, I feel comfortable clarifying, thank you. The statement was just based on the data, or on the information received from regarding positive cases secondary to quarantine. So I do know that in our district, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Bossert, that there weren't many cases, or I don't believe any cases, that resulted in positive transmission from the kids that were quarantined. So unfortunately, there were 400?
Positive cases from the kids that were quarantined.
No, no, I'm saying, so, okay, so there's a positive case, right? And everybody got quarantined, like the whole classroom got quarantined. All those quarantined kids either got tested, or they had to stay at home for 14 days, but they all got tested within the second or third day of exposure. That's what we started doing, and we started seeing those kids in my office. And all of those kids that got quarantined were not positive for COVID, because they were masked. Well, that's the assumption. One of the mitigation measures was the mask.
Yeah, just with all due respect, again, that's not what we're seeing from the studies across the country, that masks are doing that. So that's not a study, so it's a little bit misleading to state to a room full of people that that's your opinion, that's what you've seen.
Okay.
But from colleagues across the country, that's not what we're hearing.
I don't think I said that it was a study. I said, in our district, we didn't see a single case of positive case secondary to quarantine.
Okay, thank you so much for clarifying. And just another question, because you did publicly state in a newsletter, a new statement last week in a publication in Huntington, that COVID had already killed over four times more children than during a typical flu season. I'm just curious if that was written in error. To the best of my knowledge, approximately 200 children die annually in the U.S. from the flu, and to date, over the past year and a half, approximately a little less than 400 children have died from COVID.
Zethner, thank you for that question, I'm sorry, but, Dr. Siddiqui, if you'd like to answer it, we're not going to lie.
Are you talking about the number that we referenced?
The AEP, the- The exact statement that you made, that four times more children were killed from COVID than the flu.
So usually flu, okay, so usually, even one death that's preventable is tragedy, right, in a child?
Of course.
But having said that, 358 deaths were reported from COVID, and that's from the AAP COVID tracker that's online.
COVID over the past year and a half.
That's correct. Well, that's from the AAP COVID tracker, that's where we got our numbers from. And usually, in one year, it's about 100 flu, close to approximately 100 flu deaths in a year. So it's four times as much.
So approximately 200 children die, but I just want, you know, 100 deaths from the flu, to the best of my knowledge, is inaccurate, but I just wanted to clarify that people can Google that themselves. We're talking about a year and a half worth of data versus a flu season.
Thank you, your time is up, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Siddiqui, I appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming.
Good evening, Ms. Bell, thank you for coming back up.
Start my time now.
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, Agapi Bell, parent only, right now. So my, my actual follow-up question was about sports, so I know I emailed earlier about it. What is not in this PowerPoint is what I did read in the attachments from NISID and from the Suffolk County Department of Health. I know those are both guidelines, and I know that NISP, I don't know if I'm saying it right, NISP, you know, they're going to be the actual governing body. So a year ago, I asked to make sure that if Section 11 runs, Elwood will participate, and I'm hoping, obviously, that that will happen again, that whatever they offer our kids, we will participate in. Right? We have cash, we have-
I will, I'd be happy to clarify that. We'll continue to follow the guidance that we receive from Section 11 and the governing body for interscholastic athletics for Suffolk County. Mr. Shanahan, our athletic director is here today. He's been practicing with his own team for the last several weeks, and overseeing preconditioning workouts for lots of our other athletes. Seasons are set to begin next week.
Yes.
And we're fortunate that the fall seasons take place outdoors, so that most of our contests can take place without restriction, and we're hopeful that remains the case throughout the interscholastic seasons.
Great. And the governing body on our athletics is going to just be that NISP and Section 11?
Well, there's the New York State, and they make recommendations to each of the sections throughout the state. We are Section 11 Suffolk County, that's who makes the decisions that impact the Elwood School District. We can choose to accept or reject them. Last year, the board was certainly in favor of accepting the recommendations of Section 11. I did as well. I'm not sure that I see any change to that.
Okay, and I haven't seen anything come out from them about changing what they did last year, or, so, right now, is just a mom trying to figure it out, like, you know, it's going to be the same thing? Like, I know, you know, we wrestled without masks last year, so are we just going to wait and see if they put out any different guidance, so for the fall, one season at a time?
Mrs. Bell, trying to avoid too much of a dialogue, I would suggest you contact Mr. Shanahan tomorrow. But specifically, the biggest change that I see in the guidance from Section 11 is the absence of COVID testing.
Yeah.
They're removing the testing protocols.
I saw that.
So if anything, Section 11 seems to be more lenient with the restrictions than more restrictive.
Yeah, okay, and just, is my time up? Okay, so with the parent choice that people are talking about, so maybe a survey to see, like, are you willing to risk a quarantine for your child, and what that entails, like, what kind of learning, quote-unquote, will that be? If my kid gets, I personally am going to do everything, and I'm willing to do anything to avoid quarantines. So I just wanted to say, I appreciate the guidelines you put out.
Thank you, Ms. Bell, and I will just redirect you back to the email address that was listed this evening. That is exactly what that is there for, is to hear from our community, hear from our residents on a specific topic, which is the reopening, and the masking, and the quarantine. So please, address it that way, I think that would be very beneficial. Thank you. I can't say the last name, Ms. Navarakis? Sorry.
I used two very difficult ones, Elena Veviakas Narvez. Okay, I have a question, again, about parent choice, if that's okay? Dr. Bossert, you mentioned the burden that the quarantining and contact tracing was on the district, and I'm curious to know, and I'm sure that now with full in-person learning, that takes a financial and administrative burden off of the district, not having to supply two modes of education for students. So if we were to consider parent choice as an option for masks, if it's not mandated by the new governor, is the- by the new governor, is the quarantining the main concern because that does take up so much of the administration's time? Is that the challenge?
My primary concern is the health and safety of the students, faculty, and staff. The labor that's intensive in contact tracing, is that it's time-consuming? But that's certainly not the primary driving factor. The driving factor in the decision-making is trying to keep everyone healthy, safe, and in school.
Right. I mean, of course, we all have different opinions, and the data is neither here nor-- I mean, you can look for what you want to look for, right? I mean, if you're looking for-- okay, we don't have to go there. But my other question is-- actually, I guess this is more of a statement, but you mentioned really wanting to optimize kids in school and the instruction time. I just really want to put an emphasis on-- the kids are having a really hard time-- many of them are having a hard time being in masks in general. And overall health and well-being has a lot to do with these masks right now. And as a parent, it's really difficult. And I know I'm not going to beat, you know, a dead horse, but I hope that it's something that you'll all consider because it's really gotten to a point where, when-- where is the end? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other remarks this evening? Good evening, Mr. Fox.
Good morning, good evening. I'm just going to keep this to about 10 to 15 seconds. As you know, I've been emailing you back and forth quite a few times. I'm going to stress to you one more time as a parent, please consider making masks optional. I have two kids at home who are melting down over this, and I'm not the only parent. I know we've had disagreements, but there is a health crisis that is happening, and it's not with COVID. So please, look into your hearts. Please make a decision just for an option. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Is there any other residents who wish to speak this evening? I want to take this opportunity to thank everybody for keeping this as cordial as possible. I know there were some random outbursts, but I will say, as a whole, we were able to hear you. And every one of us that ran for the Board of Education, ran on the platform at some point to hear your voices, and that was done this evening. So we thank you for taking the time. Thank you for being cordial and respectful to the process and the policies. And we have a rough road ahead of us. Good, bad, or indifferent, we have a crisis in front of us. Whether it's the kids wearing a mask, the kids going to school, the kids having issues with learning, gap remediation, we have a lot in front of us. And as a community, regardless of where you stand, I hope that we rally together for the goodness of our children, of our students, and our community. And it's not going to be an easy task, but it's going to take a community, and Elwood does come together always. So I hear everybody. I think the board heard everybody this evening. And we just want to thank you for coming out tonight and expressing your thoughts and concerns with us. With that, there are no other residents' remarks. I make a motion to adjourn--
Mr. Tomio, I want to be procedurally accurate. And the district clerk shook her head at me earlier for a reason. There was an item that the board tabled that is part of the agenda tonight. I want to be procedurally correct. There was a discussion item. I don't know that there's any need to further discuss the issues. Dr. Siddiqui?
I will ask Dr. Siddiqui, ask to have it on. It's action-- discussion item H. Would you like to-- is it to redact it from the agenda since we tabled it? How would procedurally-- just move on?
The district clerk will make the minutes work, is what she's saying.
Thank you, Ms. Marks. Thank you, Dr. Siddiqui, for the flexibility. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Motion, Mrs. Weiss, seconded by Mrs. Mammalito. All in favor? Five, zero. Thank you, Mr. Skorla, for zooming in. Get home safe. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you for coming, everyone.